We're going to get started with the executive portion of the meeting and then we'll move into the public portion of the meeting if you follow. We do not have any minutes tonight. We will have a public hearing on the City Market 2012 budget. So the introductions today, here, will be Wednesday, July 18. We have ordinances on second reading, O-Dash-041203, and ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, add one residential parking zone at 71 South Orange Street. We have O, we have 041204, and ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits into establishing a cat bank. When we vote on this, we're going to have to take a phone, which I've just been informed that it's no longer necessary, or you're giving it to the city attorney. We'll scratch that. We have ordinances on first reading, O-Dash-051201, and ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the Eastern Park redevelopment area in the City of New Brunswick, that's the old Votec Building. O-Dash-051202, and ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory ordinance of the City of New Brunswick. Loading zones, and O-Dash-051203, ordinance to amend management salary ordinance by adding assistant maintenance supervisor in salary. We have resolutions, R-Dash-051201, approve agenda minutes, 02 approve payroll, April 14th through April 27th, 2012. 03 is being pulled with requests of the city clerk. 04 authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 05, approve amendment of resolution R-Dash-101130, reasons the change of business address from Interpol Industries 77 Hamidish to Jersey City to Interpol Industries 100 Hamidish to Jersey City. 06, award of contract with Atlantic Tackle for sections 1, 2, 4, and 7, not to exceed $18,000. Plumington Parking Store for sections 3, 5, and 6, not to exceed $7,000, these are for working or for the police department. 07, approve amendment of resolution R-Dash-050932, extend the contract for one additional year with Red Flex Traffic Systems for the police department. 08, authorize joint application, execution, and acceptance of grant for 2012 with three other municipal county municipalities, the New Jersey Department of Justice, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, this has been, he's been getting this for a few years, many years. 09, approve taxi license transfer, taxi cab license 39, from Leila Hasabala to Walid Ahmed. 10, approve request to conduct sidewalk sale and post no parking signs, requested by the Presbyterian Church, Saturday, June 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 11, award of contract with Rosenbauer, South Dakota, for Ferguson Deliverer, one fire rescue truck, not to exceed $246,487. 12, one price purchase of one used vehicle from Franklin County Fire District for a 1990 Spartan Marion 1500 GP M fire comfort truck, not to exceed $25,000. 13, approve resolution for Puerto Rican Action Board for congratulatory 40th anniversary. 14, approve request for street closing by New Brunswick Police Department for National Police Speed Memorial Service, Kirkpatrick Street between New and Bayard, Friday, May 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 15, approve request for street closing requested by the New Brunswick Recreation Department for 12th Annual Silbox Urban Location, Johnson Drive to George Street, Saturday, June 16th and Sunday, June 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 16, request for use of city property, location Boyd Park requested by the Recreation Department for Independence Day concert and fire on Sunday, July 1st, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. 17, request for use of city property, youth sports complex by the New Brunswick Board of Education for the Livingston School Field Day, Monday, June 11th, rainy Wednesday, June 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 18, approve amendment of R-Dash-031254, approve request for use of city property requested by Messiah Church of God, Easter Park for singing and preaching, Saturdays, May 19th and June 30th, Warf Memorial Park, Saturday, July 14th, and, I'm sorry, Easter Sunday, Saturdays, occasion World War, Saturday, July 14th, then Joyce Kilmer, Saturday, August 4th, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. 19, a resolution authorize the city engineer to sign municipal review statement in connection with O-Dash-041202, bus stops. 20, approve change order number 8, file for delay contracted for College Avenue, Wastewater Pumping Station, to credit the amount of $16,111.17. 21, approve resolution to award and reject, we didn't do on this one, sanitary sewer cleaning and something.
I believe we're recommending an award.
Okay, so approve the resolution to award for bid, sanitary sewer cleaning, close circuit TV inspection and manhole inspection. 22, approve resolution to award bids. You got your awarding there?
It was awarded.
I'm sorry?
It was awarded.
We usually put it that way.
I know, but it's one of those sort of considering awards.
We're recommending award, because.
For Stamford Street, Wig Avenue Traffic Signal Replacement. 23, authorize lease of slating special fees for four-eyed development on 120 Oldham Street in Brunswick for spring street development. 24, approve request for street closing, the Hungarian Civic Association for the annual Hungarian festival, Bethany Street, Somerset Street, and the Meredith Center property, Plum Street, Somerset Street, 66 Plum Street, Somerset Street, Bethany Street, Division Street, date is Saturday, June 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and subject to three seconds due. 25, approve raffle license off premises for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. 26, approve change in floor plan for Gomez, Gomez-Steven Trading Addit, the Palace, 181 True Avenue. 27, approve request for street closure, relaxation of noise ordinance, traffic signal removal and placement of temporary signs, stop signs, by Joseph Ginoli and Sons for completion of certain construction activities, to the Wellness Plaza, street closure of Joyce Kilmer Avenue from Patterson Street to Route 27, April 30th through June 22nd, 3:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. 28, authorize advertising to exceed the bids for two replacement BFD motor controllers for the Roll's Waters Pumping Station. 29, authorize board up leans for 29 Corcoran Street. 30, authorize board up lean for 164 Commercial Avenue. And 31, authorize board up leans for 148 Howe Streets. 32, authorize advertising to exceed the bids for 2012 first delivery of regulatory signs. 33, approve request for solicitation of fund requests by the New Brunswick Athletic Association to raise funds to pay for the annual insurance program, corner of Jersey Avenue and Handy Street, Saturday, June 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th. 34, approve the 2012, 2013 Consolidated Annual Action Plan and authorization execution of community development, block rate, and home investment partnership rate. 35, approve raffle license off premises for St. Howe's Episcopal Church. 36, approve the 2012 emergency temporary appropriations. 37, approve appointment of council, Mitzner and Ms. Mitzner, for representation of Andrew Weiss, not to exceed $1,000. Any other resolutions, proposals?
I'm going to correct that, maybe 26. I overlooked Steven Gomez, not Steven.
Okay, so Steven Gomez, not Steven. The item I am for discussion, Jevon Ellis, there's no change.
I believe, Officer, we'll just see, I can give you a few moments, somebody's in line.
Officer, briefly.
Yes, sir, Patrick Morris, please. The last two weeks, Jevon Ellis, we had 11 calls for service, three for disorderly persons or discondu-, uh, disorderly persons or disorderly conduct. Those disorderly conduct calls were, I believe, between 2:30 and 3:00 in the morning, two on a Wednesday night, one on a Thursday night. Out of the six nights in question, as far as Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which Councilman Egan was very concerned about, we had our mobile police precinct out there three of those nights. One night, the precinct was out there at 5:00 p.m. till, I believe, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. The other two nights, I believe it was later in the evening, into the early hours of the morning. Other nights, we had other obligations with the mobile precinct. We had a meeting with the tavern owners, some of the tavern owners, on Eastern Avenue. TK Shammy, myself, and several tavern owners. We're trying to get everybody together, so everybody can be responsible for the Eastern Avenue corridor. Two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the restaurant owners, now we're going to the tavern owners. We're making some progress, I don't want to get into some specifics, or all the specifics about the meeting. We should probably discuss that at a later time, but we're making some progress, and we're moving forward.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go into public portion of the meeting, or meeting please come over. Quick, please pull a roll.
Councilmember Cook and Councilmember Egan is absent. Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Here.
Council President Reese.
Here. Please be advised with the notice requirement to open public meeting at the venue, compliant and satisfied with the annual notice, which gives sufficient notice of time and place in contact of all public meetings in municipal council, and the City of New Brunswick and file with the city clerk, place an appropriate toll and warrant, and lobby the city for all, and transmit it to the official district of the City of New Brunswick meeting. Let the ladies and gentlemen.
Let the ladies and gentlemen. We are the great United States of America, and we are the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice.
Please remain standing for a moment, as long as all those that have given their lives in the conflicts in the Middle East. Thank you. Yeah, the public hearing first, for City Market, I'm going to ask Pam to give us a brief summary of the public budget this year.
Pam Stefani, Executive Director of the New Brunswick City Market. With our current budget this year, what we're going to expect is an overall reduction in revenue of over 7.7% from last year's. This includes a decrease in city assessment revenue by 3.2% and about 2% in reductions from marketing and promotional sponsorships. Administrative expenses are estimated to increase slightly, 2.6%, with regards to benefits, accounting services, audit services, legal services, telephone supplies. Overall program expenses are going to substantially be reduced by 35% in our marketing and promotions, which is going to impact the downtown promotion and some of our business promotions that we do. Increasing by 12.6% is going to be the downtown improvements, which are the maintenance expenses due to graffiti removal, gun removal, and litter removal in the downtown. What we did was we moved from our discretionary budget marketing into our maintenance fees. Overall, we're going to reduce our expenses by 7.4 or 5%. So we will make budget. Thank you.
The public hearing on this will be Wednesday, July 18th. So a motion to introduce, can set the hearing for?
I made a motion to introduce, the budget for City Market, setting down Wednesday, July 18th, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Call.
Councilmember Egan, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, ordinance is on second reading, O-Dash-041203, and ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Traffic and Parking, one residential parking zone at 71 South Orange Street. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Seena?
Take the motion.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-041204, and ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits into establishing a cat bank. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Seena?
Take the motion.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. Ordinance is on first reading, O-Dash-051201, and ordinance to amend redevelopment plan for the Eastern Park redevelopment area in the City of New Brunswick.
Make a motion, setting down Wednesday, May 16th, for public hearing, same date to be advertised. Second.
Call.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. O-Dash-051202, and ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10 loading zones.
Make a motion, setting down Wednesday, May 16th, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. And O-Dash-051203, and ordinance to amend management salary ordinance by adding assistant maintenance supervisor in salary.
Make a motion, setting down Wednesday, May 16th, same date to be advertised. Second.
Call.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. That's it on first reading? Okay. Then we'll move on to the resolutions, R-Dash-051201 through R-Dash-051237, number three have been polled, we're on the table. Anyone wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Seena?
Make a motion to approve the resolutions.
Second.
Call.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese.
Aye. Do we have any questions?
Yes, we do, Mr. Councilor.
Item number one is a correspondence from the Construction Management Associates regarding 66 Sidecar Street site performance bond. And item number two is a notice from PSCNG regarding the removal of trees as part of vegetation management work. And most of the audience, I don't know if you can hear me, but I said.
Any member of council who wants to address the public? Anybody? I'm sorry. Anybody in, for the public, who wants to address the council? Mr. Storey, welcome back, hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know it brings joy to see you. I know it brings joy to your heart to see me back, and vocal. What I, again, I'm going to mention something which has been of special interest to me, but I would have thought that it would have been taken care of as required by law several years ago, with special attention being given to two handicapped people who live in the city, one in county government and one in city government. Curb cuts at the Wolfson Bank.
Down in the Nielsen area, you know, like? All right. I'll take this one, I think this one's a little bit of a problem before I follow this.
Because it's a little bit of a problem to, well, you.
Coming out that side of the Nielsen.
Yeah. Because, again, I don't have a better answer, but I'm not happy with the curb, oh, with the crosswalks by the chess bank there, because really, if you've got to, you can't go across to the bank, you've got to go to the other side of that street. I don't know what it's called this time. What is the name of that street below Nielsen going down toward, I believe?
Richmond.
Is that Richmond down there? Yes, because it.
The crosswalk on, from here.
To go across Nielsen.
For across Nielsen?
Yeah.
To the corner, higher to the back end?
Yes, that intersection, because it really, there is one crosswalk on the further side going toward Albany. Or there, I mean, a, the sign, or the marking for the crosswalk, but there is none on the other side. But I've looked at it, and I'm not sure that I have a better idea.
Well, the engineer's here, so you can take note of, maybe pick up what you have at hand.
That it is not. And of course, if he can take a look at the curb cut on both, on both sides going off into the parking lot, into the Wolfson Bank. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Redna?
Charles Redna, Harvey Street. Ordinance is on first reading, 201, is that for the Votec?
Yes.
And when that was first brought here to be referred to the planning board, I believe that Mr. Patterson indicated there was no developer in mind at that particular point. Is there now a developer in mind? And how far along are we, and what is the plan basically?
Mr. Patterson?
There's no new developer that's been designated. The, when the plan was originally approved, there was a developer designated to do it as age-restricted housing, that's still in place. Someone else may come in later on, but no one has presented anything yet, but the, what the amendment is, is to change the uses that are approved for that area from active adult housing to offices that would be related to the hospital uses.
Okay, so there's no change since the last comment, basically. And ordinance number 202, how are you amending the loading zone provisions, Chapter 10?
Get a, get a, get a language problem somewhere? Have I read the backup? So, the, how do you? Schedule. The language in the existing schedule was incorrect in terms of what side of the street and the distances and the like, so we're basically correcting it to make it, and then we're going to, the property owner has to, he got cited for improper sidewalks, poor sidewalk, so he's actually going to improve the sidewalks, and then we're going to designate the, the signage, the loading zone area.
Number seven, the change, the correction.
And who's the property owner that was cited?
So.
There's a little grocery store there on the corner. Corner where?
Hasser.
Hasser and George.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Charlie, Mr. Brown?
Hey, just wanted to ask, I know that earlier today, Mr. Stone, welcome back, earlier today, the Attorney General's office was searching the offices of an engineering firm. I know the city uses BirdSaw Engineering in conjunction with investigation into circumventing the pay-to-play laws on the books in our state. Could somebody tell me what BirdSaw Engineering has done for the city in recent years?
BirdSaw Works has done work for us directly and, I would say indirectly, and I'll explain that, they, they do the right-to-know compliance for all of the members of the New Brunswick County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund at the expense of the funds. But nonetheless, we're obviously a member of the JIF, and the, and BirdSaw comes in and updates all the notebooks at our various city locations and updates them for right-to-know They've also provided consulting engineering services to the New Brunswick Solar Panel Consortium with the, how, excuse me, the Parking Authority is the lead agency. They provided the consortium some consulting, some advice relative to the construction of the panels, and they also monitor the performance of the panels. And then, I think the last thing that I can think of that they've done for us is they did a greenhouse gas emissions study and a climate action plan for us a year or two ago. But, I, other than.
I'm sorry. Recreation Park.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're doing some design work for us at Recreation Park. Thank you.
Any idea on the dollar figure for, for all these contracts, or any of the individual ones?
No, but I can get to that information. I do know the, off the top of my head, the contract with the Solar Panel Consortium was about $138,000. With the others, I'm not sure, I can double-check the resolutions that may authorize the contracts.
All right. And just one other question, I guess, you know, in terms of this investigation, I know that, at the very least, Deborah Seeley, who was the vice chair of the New Brunswick Democratic Organization for some time, is, you know, at least involved, maybe even the target of the investigation. You have any comments on that? I mean, you interviewed with her, presumably to get this job.
I, well, I, what I read in the paper, according to your article in the papers, was if there was any wrongdoing and whether it should be held accountable. I know it quotes in an article from saying that it may be or is under investigation, I don't have any facts as to whether it is or isn't, but if something was done improperly, versus should be held accountable.
Thanks, that's all.
Anybody else? Anybody else who has not spoken yet? Mr. Storey?
Another curb cut that has come to my attention is the corner of Morris and Nielsen. It is cut going across toward the river, but it isn't, there is no curb cut coming along Nielsen.
Mr. Storey, I would suggest, and I thank you for those, because we're always looking to see where the traffic is, where they need it, so if you do have a suggestion, just give Mr. Rockland a call, or point out some of these corners, and then you can get them on our list of, if done.
Because you've got an issue, I appreciate it. It's got to go into a contract at some point on there. Another thing that doesn't have the same import, I have been meaning to write to the administrator, or whatever her title is, for Chandler Clinic, their parking lot. If you came down there and looked along the fence, both inside and outside the fence to their parking lot, litter, litter, it's unbelievable, and it stays there week after week after week.
Get a letter or get instructions through the contact center?
I've been wondering, you know, ever since you people pushed my favorite specter out into early retirement, we've had nobody really looking at that stuff, you know, and now we have to bring somebody down, and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention, whoever needs to look, because it is just an excess of trash.
Thank you, we need somebody else.
Both inside the parking office and on the outside.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Brown?
One more thing, I'm sorry, I forgot. I read in the paper that they changed the formula for determining the number of people that graduate from a school, and how many, what counts as graduating, I guess, in terms of the graduation rate. I noticed the New Brunswick score dropped over 10 points. Any idea why?
No, I saw your article today as well, I've not spoken to anybody at the superintendent on corporate education, so I can get a chance to read the paper, and I'll go, if you have a reason to defer to why.
Okay, well, I know, I know you serve on the Board of School Estimate, and I, is this, was this a priority, to improve the graduation rate?
I think it's always a priority to improve the graduation rate.
And so what is being done to do that?
I don't know off the top of my head, I think the best bet is to go to corporate education, maybe, and help them there, and find out. They don't work here right now, if you have one of the DAs on, and speak with them, make it quicker, but I'll check on it as well.
I just think it's really dire, it's, the, the percentage is like in the 50s now, so.
Thank you. Anybody?
Not just off of what Charlie said, I think that's like a major problem that, you know, we had a mayor that was making several appearances on Rutgers campus, here, there, and everywhere, but he's not making any appearances right to the high school in New Brunswick, and they're failing. So the question is, are you going to make a level of importance that you get this mayor to at least speak to the high school students, because the percentage of kids that are getting, that are going to Rutgers is embarrassing. You know, we have a, a major institute right here in our city, and the kids in New Brunswick aren't even taking advantage of it. That's because our mayor, he's introducing himself to the kids that are just going to Rutgers, but he's not even speaking to the high school students.
So I will definitely mention it, again, and I, you know, I told you this before, I can't make the mayor's schedule, but I would definitely mention it, and I think, I think you could do a lot to see a lot more of our students than you might think.
Of New Brunswick? New Brunswick students?
Sure. They may not be as high as you would like to see, but there are, there are students going there, and I always find that out at graduation time, so.
Well, New Brunswick got one of the lowest graduation rates in New Brunswick County, only person, only person graduates lower than New Brunswick is Perth Amboy.
I agree, that's a problem, there's no way. I agree, that's a problem, but there's no way I disagree with that.
And, you know, we do have the highest paid, you know, Scotty, he's the highest paid in Middlesex County, right?
That logic is quite as...
And but he had the lowest production rate. Highest paid superintendent with the lowest production rate. How does that add up? And it's even getting even lower now. And we have a mayor that didn't address the school, is not even making any appearances to the school, but just last week he was all over Rutgers campus.
I know in fact that there has one up there. I don't know when that time was, but then I'll, I'll reach out to your office and suggest for you then. I don't think the spirit will can't make you so.
But could we put a little more priority on it?
I would.
Thank you.
I know it's a way to handle it, but I would.
He's a what?
And I, I just wanna say, you know, it's not bad to what you're saying, but kind of, I know personally that New Brunswick does have a school system, and it do have several projects working with Rutgers University, with students that go there and students from Rutgers go to the New Brunswick High School, even to the middle school, to do some programs with our kids. There's the AR program, there's tutoring program going on. So there is some that is, I, I don't agree with, we still have much more to go with our students. And my daughter goes to the school senior, so I know.
You don't go to New Brunswick?
Yes, to New Brunswick.
What school?
She goes now to health science and tech. She graduates now as a senior. And she went through all her life through the school system in New Brunswick. So I do know that we're not there yet. We won't get there, but there, there is some stuff that Rutgers and New Brunswick are doing together for the students of New Brunswick. Last week, I just went to talk to some kids, juniors, sophomore and juniors and seniors from New Brunswick High, that they were doing something with AR Ready. They worked on the institute, they had something going on, that they do civic classes at the high school, and I just went to talk to them last week. So there is some stuff going on between both institutions, you know, New Brunswick, one of the patient and Rutgers.
I mean, I, I know there's things that are going on, but I don't see a level of urgency here. Like, you know, of course, you have to implement some type of program, but there's not a level of urgency, urgency, at least that I see. You know, I think it's a level of importance that we really have to push these kids because, you know, they have their backs against the walls, you know? And, you know, for Rutgers to even participate in anything, this is the lowest graduate in the county. This is the worst, we have the worst high school in the county. I mean, we have, we have a nice immaculate building, we have a beautiful building, but we have the worst test scores you can imagine.
Can you go to Board of Education as well?
Uh, okay.
You don't have a parent in that.
But you know what? I might, you know, 'cause I've been being a little nice lately, I might get irate in there too. I mean, you know, I'm not gonna, if I go there, I'm not gonna hold my tongue, so, you know.
I would suggest you go there otherwise.
I, I don't think I can. You guys call me now a little bit, though.
No, but there is some issues, there is some, there's, there's more, there's more of them. There's some issues that's going on with us.
As you are, but I'm trying to sit down, just allow me to sit down.
Anyone else? Over here? Yes, ma'am.
Jasmine LaSalle, I live on Hennepin Street. I don't know if this is sort of the place for this question, but how do I bring up the rules about the taxi cabs and the way they pick up their fares and whatnot?
There's, there's, there's an ordinance that governs that, which is available to get to, and then if you have specific complaints, you can let us know. They are supposed to follow rules. There are rules, and if not adhering to those, should let us know.
Okay, so you can get me those rules?
Um, you can get them available. They're currently available online on the internet, cityofnewbrunswick.org. If you contact me after this meeting, give me your phone number, I'll be happy to call you, and help you obtain over the internet, or I'll mail it to you, like, when you come by and pick them up.
Okay.
Need a chat if I could, one whole moment.
Yes.
Hi, good idea to contact them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Meo on the back?
Uh, yes. Just to stay on the subject of education, according to Star Ledger article, New Brunswick is the worst, fifty-eight percent per van, or about eighty percent. And we start talking about numbers of two-hundred-million-dollar budget, school superintendent getting paid two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a year, and the board members are appointed by the mayor, and he's absent where you can't ask him any questions. It's just that when I was walking, I walk around New Brunswick a lot, and being raised up in New Brunswick, born in New Brunswick, raised up in New Brunswick, going through the school system, high school, graduation, I seem to know where, where the African-American community people used to live. And I could actually walk down the street, Emerson Avenue, Second Ward, and I could see houses where I know that people used to live there and they're not living there anymore. So we're talking about results and we're talking about progress. And over the last twenty-five years since Jim Cahill been here, he talked about the housing that he had built, but what happened to the people that used to live in those houses, live in the community? They received the benefit of, of, of this revitalization and uplifting. Generations of young children are being hurt for the benefit of downtown. Because when you look in the other areas, they're putting underground infrastructure in, but there's nothing done above the ground to improve the quality of like, of the residents of New Brunswick. And when you a appointed board member, it's already decided what the facts are, 'cause as you know, I regularly go to board meetings and I'll be by myself. And it's really just a joke that our, that our people, African-Americans are really being taken advantage of. You know, if I didn't live in the sixteen hundreds and know what slavery was and what the caste system was, I see it. Where people, to me, it seems like they just purposely have a plan on those that are gonna benefit from down here and, and invest money that hurt the, the, the people who don't know anybody, don't have that education that they should have, to get the benefit of upliftment in the system of the new world. Generations of young children, and we sit here with an absent mayor. The mayor has another job besides being mayor of New Brunswick, et cetera. Do he have a county job?
I don't know.
Because when I look at, at, at the facts of pension and I look at the facts of how much he's making, well, I guess I would have to go to the Freeholders meeting, see if he has another job over here. Because I'm, I'm trying to see, you only got one button, I'm trying to see, you know, when you have a job, it's nine to five, this and that. So if you got another job, what, what's the hours on that job? And, and that's why we have a spokesman in, in, the only city township that goes to this county to have a spokesman and a business administrator, and he needs somebody to speak for him, and he's a mayor. I, I just, we're talking about dollars, plus we're talking about upliftment and the future of all the residents of the city of New Brunswick, which, which is why we have a problem in the criminal, when you talk about, the, the New Brunswick is always, the black man is always crime and, 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 uh, low grades and the relationship with the police, and you talk about here's development and upliftment in one little small city, five-point-five square miles. So it, it seems to me that it's just an attitude of those, what I call psychopaths, that just want something for themselves at the benefit of people who on the low end of, of the ladder, and they could really, really care less. There's, there's a book, you need to read, Snakes in Suits.
Anybody else? That has not spoken? Mr. Retna?
Wanted to add for the record, I believe the mayor does have a second job. Is there somebody in the room that could enlighten us as to whether or not he still has that job?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know if, if, I know he was working with Jiff, but I don't know if he still is, that's why I'm not sure.
Isn't he a practicing attorney?
Well, he's a veteran, though.
He wasn't the recalcitrant.
But I, I, I know the, the spokesman for the mayor is here tonight. Is there anyone else here who knows this, this information? Could you ask the spokesman?
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, when you talk about education, I've had a pet peeve for a number of years, because I'm listening tonight and I'm hearing no mention of Middlesex County College. You Rutgers, 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 but nothing about Middlesex County College. I had a grievance some years back, because I felt that Middlesex County College, when they found that graduates of our high school couldn't do the work, and then they would suggest remedial courses for which they had to pay, or somebody had to pay for remedial courses, I felt that the faculty, the head people at Middlesex County College should have been blowing the whistle right then, saying, there's something wrong when you're graduating people from the high school and they can't handle the work.
Mr. Stewart, I'll tell you, when I went back to school, I did go to Middlesex every morning. So after I did spend some time in Rutgers before I got hurt, they required remedial classes for everyone. It's not, it wasn't based on New Brunswick high schools. They wanted me to act as a tactic, to force the Rutgers to take the basic method, to prove their ability. So it wasn't, it's not New Brunswick, it's not New Brunswick high school, it's for all incoming freshmen.
Well, that is a problem, to me, because actually...
Well, that's your broadest threat, it's for all, whoever's going to that school, not just...
Well, that, and I'm saying, that is a problem. It is a problem, and it should be, it should be challenged, because I don't see why, if you graduate, you should be able to do the minimum, you know? Now, I had one of my...
For men and for English students.
One of my African godsons, he came and he wanted to go right in, right after he came to live with me, he wanted to go to Middlesex College. Well, it turned out that he could not handle the work at all. So I happen to know who was heading up the Adult Learning Center at the time. I talked to her, and we put him right into the Adult Learning Program, and he graduated from New Brunswick High School. And then he, of course, was qualified, but that was not the, the case of people who have attended the high school all along. There's something wrong when you can graduate from high school and not be able to do what amounts to the entry level work at the college. And the, the management of the college and the faculty up there should be blowing the whistle on that, because if they were doing it for free, I wouldn't care. I wouldn't say a thing. But they're collecting money, tuition, salaries and everything, to do something that should have been done at the high school level.
Just going to comment, I had records in September nineteen fifty, eighteen fifty, as we seem to probably suggest, an awful lot of freshman class were taking remedial English and did some remedial math. And they came out of New Brunswick High School, they came out of St. Peters, and they came out of schools all over the state. So it's, it's not really a new problem.
But what are they doing about? If you mentioned it was way back, way back, I don't know how far back that was when you went to school.
You had a secondary medical course. I fortunately didn't. I had a good, good education at St. Peters, that I had to, to a classroom, mine, I had tech remedial English, to New Brunswick High School graduates, and had tech remedial English before the people was, to regular English courses. I don't know if that's still the experience of Mr. Retna, but I'd be surprised if it wasn't.
That's enough. Mr. Mayor?
I just want to speak for him one time, because I, important point here. Jimmy Cook has been absent for how long?
A number of months.
When do we expect him back?
I do not know. I know his experience since, considering health issues and I haven't time to get anything back.
And that's understandable. And the mayor knows, and the black community sitting here, we're talking about different issues that I'm confronted by people every day, and that I see myself as a resident, that I know three and three is six, while these folk want you to think three and three is four. That we need somebody independent, sitting there, that's not an organization benefiting from jobs and et cetera, et cetera. I know how the operation work, I've studied it, right? To represent us as African-Americans, because we're not being, we're not getting our portion of what we need. I remember a long time ago, I bought a drill team member to, to counsel for citizens, and we're talking, we're talking about the budget. And the little girl was no bigger than this, and she said, hey, Mr. Roy, you need drill team in the budget? So if there's a budget of eighty million dollars, and we're sitting here with no benefit jobs, and I'm not a power job, seems like you mean only jobs that Africans, Americans get recreation, entertainment, babysitting, patty cake. We're not involved in any power job, distributing the police department, things, in Board of Education that you can actually go and make some action. And if I asked right now, that we've got three new chaplains in the police department, by action, who chose them? Who are the three chaplains in the, for the police department?
New ones?
Yes. Or who are they?
I, I saw this, I don't know.
Reverend Hoover, Miss Seabright, Reverend LaSalle, this is one, and Rabbi Peter, I think it's also one.
Rick Ernich.
Kerry.
And Monsieur Carr.
Yeah, how many live in New Brunswick? Yeah, see, and, and, and we're gonna get direct action for what we need to have. Then we need somebody there that's actually looking into the issue of the African-American community, not benefiting from it personally, you know? Because generations and generations of our children are being hurt for the benefit of those, not only them only, know what they're doing, but just don't care. If only they give you a little bit of something, it's okay. We're not on the real power making jobs to say, okay, if you're putting ten cops on, I want to make sure that all these guys in New Brunswick, I want to make sure that they are, uh, 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 you know, it should be that they came from New Brunswick High School since they was a resident, and I've been fighting for that for years. But we don't have the power that we should have, but we're voters. And when these elections been quite nasty, 'cause I've been involved in a lot of them, been real nasty. It, it seems like Dracula looking for blood at, at night, that we want to win so bad. And I understand why, because of the benefit of the money that people get jobs and stuff to benefit from. But we're being hurt, and I blame it on us, I don't blame them, I blame them African-Americans. 'Cause it's time for us to stand up. And, and we see a lot of things happening that I've seen over the years, and other people are witnessing to, and there's not gonna be no change, but it is, is just slow it down, just, just wait a while, wait a while, wait a while, then there's no results at all. And that's our fault. But it's on your conscience. It's on your conscience, because I know if I ran for mayor, I know if I was mayor, it would be totally different. On my worst day, things would be better. On my worst day. It's really, to me, a joke. And I know you don't want to hear that, it hurts your feelings, because, you know, you know, everybody's world-class in here and all that, but great Charles could do a better job. And especially with the school system, I was in one of the softball games, New Brunswick playing another school, and it was sad. And the school that they were playing probably got a ten-million-dollar budget, we got a two-hundred-million-dollar budget. And the, the girls, the girl, they were told to take it easy on New Brunswick. I'm an athlete, I, I was all-state football, I'm, I'm an athlete. And I know what New Brunswick can bring, but if we don't have the right people in position, not chosen by administration, but the right people that can actually give us the results that we need to be world-class, then that's hurting our children. And a lot of the children quit the team. So you gotta decide, sit at that council, you know, and I know that the Democratic Party and the mayor's campaign paid for the elections and all that, and you serve it, give your job and all that, I understand that. But you gotta make a decision when you say you're there for the people. I'm proud to be a police officer. When I said I was a police officer, I worked actually for the people. That's why I can walk up and down the street and hold my head up high, and know I was never bought and paid for. And I can speak my mind like this, 'cause I get up to work every day. And, 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 and it's really, shame, it's getting worse with, with our children. So what I'm saying is, is that the mayor is like, he's not here now. He has, he's not gonna face somebody that can stand up to him. He's, he's not gonna face that, he gonna sit out in the way. We're gonna have other people do the work. It's time to face things and stand up and be a man.
Sean Mahan, Harvey Street. I'm, I'm very concerned here about the graduation rate issue. You know, the, I believe New Brunswick High School is the most expensive high school in the state, or at least it was when it was built, you know, like, what's our return on investment? You know, and also hearing that Kaplan is one of the highest-paid superintendents, I mean, this is just ridiculous.
Oh, who will Board of Education be paying?
Yeah, well, I, I, I will, but I also think we need to get the, put the pressure on the mayor, because he appoints the Board of Education, you know? And so it's, that's probably how I'm trying to do that, is by telling you. The other thing that worries me is that people like Chris Christie are able to, to use the education issue against Democrats, because in my experience... against Democrats, because in my experience, it seems Democrats don't have a strong position on what can be done to fix the problems in the schools. I completely disagree with the voucher system that Christie's proposing. But, for us to effectively fight him, we need to have an alternative plan. Like, the status quo is obviously not working. So what is that other plan? You know, like, Democrats have to come up with something that works. And I think that places like New Brunswick, which are, you know, heavily Democratic and heavily connected to the party, would be a good place to try to make those changes. So what can, what can we do? Because Christie's like, more, you know, one of the most popular governors in the state, he's right now campaigning for Scott Walker, he might become the president in 2016, which would be an utter disaster. And really, what put him there, you know? I would say it's lousy Democrats. It's not that he has great ideas, you know, it's that the Democratic Party is collapsing and failing to live up to its own ideals, you know, that's, I think that John Corzine failed us, and, you know, that was what got Chris Christie out of it. So what can, you know, what's our answer to that?
She asked me.
Yeah. Come on, what do you think?
I don't know.
Come on, give it up.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, what you're saying, I don't disagree with, and I think it's a huge problem. The only one answer, and it's very complex, so.
Well, what are some reforms that we could do to the schools?
I don't know.
I think one thing to explore is public school, public school choice.
You'd like the Board of Education?
The Board of Education. For school choice, the part that moves the vouchers system, or the, you know, the first best, and they're sitting, larger, and they work in that area, it's, you know, like that. It's not anything else, it's not anything, and I know sometimes it's not always the money that's going to have, have to schools and initiatives. A lot of it has to do with the population and home life, and, uh, what kind of work is given in homework and testing, and whether they're teaching towards the two-day test anymore, as opposed to teaching kids. I mean, I find my own thoughts early on, what I think should be done is go back to teaching reading, writing, and earth with their girl, and build the base before you move on to some of these other things. Not worry about more of the abstract concepts, but teach a child how to read, write, and do math early on. Once they can do that, you can build on it, and do anything else. But I think sometimes we're trying to do too much with the child in, you know, whose abstract ideas instead of the basics anymore. Yeah, that's my opinion on that.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me, um, you know, my, someone in my family works as a policy researcher, and something that brought to light to me was that a lot of policy research is never implemented or followed, I guess. And I know, for example, I've heard that these big high schools don't work. You know, that like, comparative effectiveness research, and I'm not an expert on this, but, you know, suggests that it's better to have smaller ones that are spread out, and it makes sense.
Smaller area, less trees.
Right. So what drives the decision to build a three-hundred-million-dollar high school, instead of three eighty-million-dollar ones?
I do not know the thought process that went through at the times of whatever it was, the cost of the money, uh, still, uh, construction, ready for state, so.
With all the things that we're hearing about these contractors and things, you know, it's not hard for someone to think that what drives these decisions is giving money to these contractors.
Do you understand the thought process?
Right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, good. Good afternoon. I'm Kelly Sanchez, I'm from South Brunswick, New Jersey. It's not really a question, it's more of a general comment. I just wanted to kind of point out that, you know, all these frustrations that are coming are, you know, they're stemming from what I believe is concentrated poverty and gentrification. You know, the school system is a perfect example of that, as well as some of the focus and the catering due to Rutgers. I'm a Rutgers student in grad school for policy, so we kind of feel that much of the research that's being done isn't implemented, because it's true. There's a lot of great ideas out there, they're just not being put into place. So, I just wanted to say that, and that, you know, if we do our part as city residents, can you promise as the council to do your part as well?
Good evening. Beverly Marshall, thirty-three Commercial Avenue. I really, right now, I want to discuss what happened to me January the first. You know that my house was broken into early New Year's morning. And I want this on record here, that before that incident happened, I was threatened by a city employee on the twenty-first of December. On the twenty-fourth of December, which is my birthday, that's when someone broke my window, my kitchen window before eleven a.m. And then on January the first, that's when the three gentlemen broke into, into my home. I want this on record, is because I heard the gentleman back saying that people, that he blamed everything on African-Americans. Since I've been living here, I have always been involved in the community, and I haven't been bought by anyone, and I stand my ground. I have been to the Board of Ed meetings, you know, I've also been the president of Lord Sterling PTO. And I know, for years that I've been on the city's D-list. I'm probably further down now, because even what happened to me, and the way it happened, and these gentlemen, or these, I can't call them thugs. Well, because you know what? Their English, besides the first one, the first guy, there was two Hispanics and one African-American. And his, what he, how he was speaking was something from a movie. And the second two guys, they spoke too clear. They didn't, they, none of them spoke like street thugs. Their English was very clear and very precise, they didn't even act like thugs. But the reason why I want this on record is, since this incident has happened every week, I've been going to see a therapist. And maybe, to some degree, this has happened to quiet me down, but all it has done is made me angry. And even what's going on down in the city is still the same thing, it's like, everyone here know that I'm involved in the community, and everything is being done all around the area that I live in. They also know that I'm a committee woman, and everything is done around me. And all that's doing is making me angry, it's going to make me go to the newspapers, it's going to make me go back to the TV, to let them know exactly what's going on here in the city of New Brunswick, and let other people in other cities know how African-Americans and a black senior citizen here in this town is being totally ignored. Now, you can't tell me if I was a white woman, sixty-eight years old, and three thugs broke into their house with a woman and a disabled child, and was smacked, black-eyed, then you can't tell me that something would not have been done within twenty-four hours. All I have gotten from the police department is that they have no leads. But they have leads for other things that's going on in the city. They're out there on Eastern Avenue, they can tell you who's coming in and out of the bars, or the restaurants. A couple of houses on Eastern Avenue from students that was broken into. I'm sure that they have police officers out there protecting them. So, who's going to protect the senior citizens, the senior citizens here in this city? No one, no one has even bothered about, except for a few. Has even bothered about after that happened to check, to see how I was doing. But the thing is, is out of sight, out of mind. And I want you to know, and I want it on record, I do not appreciate it one bit, because I'm learning, even though I knew before about what's going on in this city, it's getting worse, and it shouldn't be.
Anyone else?
Nope, not that easy.
I agree with that, you know? I think you guys are putting more attention on Geovannelli's than you are seniors that are getting assaulted in our community. I just was at Geovannelli's Friday, I went about, I like to go there on occasion just to see actually what, all the complaints that are coming in here about, and there was virtually no one out there. But there was a police officer positioned right there on the corner, directly across from Cluckoo Chicken, just posted. No one was at, I'm talking, it had to be, I probably was the only one out there. And I recorded it also, but he's actually out there. No one's out there, he's posting. Now, you have a young lady, Ms. Marshall, that has been assaulted, and is getting no attention whatsoever. You guys even took the extent, I just found out, that you brought the mobile precinct up there. That's insane. And then you have senior members of our community, they're getting assaulted, you know, and there's no attention? I think we should lay off of Geovannelli's a little bit, and start focusing on our senior members in our community, so they can feel safe. And another question too, is you're directing people to go to the Board of Education meetings, about as far as the educational system. We're here complaining about the educational system. If we go to the Board of Education, we'll complain about the same educational system in New Brunswick. What if we took all your councilmen, and we took everyone from the Board of Education, we took everybody from the administration? How many of those children actually go to New Brunswick High School? Put all of them together.
I don't know how many children, so I can't.
How many? Did your daughter, did your child go to New Brunswick High School?
She took her own. Hell science, yes, hell science, and she went to the impossible school, I like.
No, to the high school.
It must be high school, she took her own science at the law.
How many of the administration, how many of the kids of the administration actually go to this school? Because if this is low number, probably zero, but if that's a low number, then that's probably why this is not a priority to the city of New Brunswick. I mean, if you, if you had a child that was going to that school, and you know that they were, yeah, you know they were, which I know on your deathbed, your child wouldn't go to New Brunswick High School.
I wouldn't be so sure of that.
Probably St. Peters.
No.
Yeah, well, it was, you know?
No.
But I'm saying, there's no-
No offense to St. Peters.
But I'm saying, there's no, there's no priority, because none of you guys' kids go to this high school.
Yeah, don't object, but I would do, I have a different history.
But no, but none of you guys' kids go to this school. I went to Red Shaw, I went to New Brunswick High School. If I was going to Red Shaw today, I'd be in a warehouse. I went my entire school, from one through eight, I went to Red Shaw. You know, and none of you guys' kids are going, and I think that's the problem we should look at. If you're not gonna change how things are done in the school system, at least have your kids suffer some of the brutality that our kids are suffering.
Yeah. I think that's a really excellent point. I'm very surprised to hear that council won't ask for us to travel to the-
It's going to be surprising, isn't it?
That's, right, because I've asked many other people, I won't name names, but many of the people up here, and other folks who work in the city administration, they're sending, yeah, sending their kids to, believe it's in Mettageon, right, St. Joseph's, right? This is like just the popular one. And it's also noteworthy that the city, or the Democratic Party, has chosen the principal of that private school to run to, you know, replace Mr. Seem and Mr. Cook. That, you know, on many levels, there is a clear indication that the public schools are not, you know, a serious priority.
But if you ask a question, you know, also the people that, that have the same feelings, you know, advocate for various schools, and all that, but they also have their kids at Rutgers Prep, or some, they still-
Sure.
What can you say to those people? Because if you are advocating for, for the schools, and you need to do better, you leave your kids there and start fighting for it, but then you have people that are posing out there, are being global in that community, that are out there, looking for change, and then they kiss it, I want to go to Rutgers Prep.
I think that the son shouldn't be punished for the sins of the father, so-
And again, so why are you saying?
So if you, right, well, I'm not saying that you're punishing them by not sending them, but, you know, those children do, should be able to get the best education available, and it's a tragedy, as far as I'm concerned, that that same education that you get at Rutgers Prep or St. Joseph's isn't available to every, you know, high school student in New Brunswick. But it doesn't mean-
So it's not just with this, you know, because you say there are people here, but there's people that you probably know, they-
Yes. I do, and I understood, and that was a part, right, and in the cases, right, and in the case that you may be referring to, that was a very difficult decision for them. But the frank facts of the matter are that their children were behind in terms of, you know,
They went to the same school, my daughter went to the same.
Right, and, and behind, okay, behind where the people whose children were going, were at Rutgers Prep. You know, so, people with similar age groups who were going to the private schools, you know, were, were doing better, obviously, and those folks felt it was necessary to provide the best education for their children that they could. You know, and it's not their fault, by any means, that the high school is in such terrible shape, you know? And I think that you, it would be, I think it's incorrect to make this claim that, that, that you can't critique. I think you can critique if you've taken the map.
I'm making a point.
That's what I'm saying.
After trying.
I'm hitting on the same thing. We're not gonna keep going on, I understand the whole thing about the school, but I don't need to keep hearing it.
No, 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 we have to. We're talking about education.
We're hearing it over and over again, so.
But you know what it is? If something sinks in, if something sinks into you guys, you're getting frustrated, listen to me, oh, wait, wait, wait. You're getting frustrated over a long debate. Imagine how frustrated a parent is getting because their child is failing. If we have to be here till twelve in the morning-
We have to go to Board of Education meetings.
The mayor appoints the Board of Education. So why don't we just go to him? And the only way that we can go to him is through you. So why are we, why are you sending us to a middleman? Why are you sending us to a middleman? We're gonna go to Board of Education, somebody that the mayor appoints. We're coming here so you can, so you can address the mayor.
I appreciate your concern, but I don't have anything to do with the board, I'm a liaison, but I don't set board policy, I don't set education policy, I can do what I can do.
Well, this is my order of operation, and this, I'll show you a little secret. I'll tell you a little secret about how I operate. I know I don't tell nobody my tricks. But my thing is to frustrate you, so you can go and frustrate him. If I let you off the log easy, you'll let, you won't even mention it to him. But if I, if we as a community frustrate each and every one, because none of you kids, none of you guys' kids go to that school. So you can't relate to it.
I have kids.
If you did, adopt some then. But you know, but we're still, tell me you can't get frustrated with us until, until this problem is fixed, or you really put up a serious fight for it, and then we can calm down. But until that happens, we're gonna be frustrated.
This is what I want to say about the Board of Ed, and with your daughter going to Science and Technology High School. My granddaughter graduated from Science and Technology High School the first year that they opened. My grandson, I took him out of the elementary, well, junior high, not even junior high, but the high school in New Brunswick, and I sent him to St. Peters. He was there for a year. He didn't like it that much, and I don't think they liked him, because of, he has, he speaks his mind. So he wanted to go back to New Brunswick High School, which he did, and that's the year that, you know, the football, when they won the- But anyway, what I'm saying is that, most of the teachers during the time that my grandchildren were in the high school, the majority of the teachers, their children were not attending schools in New Brunswick. They were in North Brunswick, they were in private schools. And you also had teachers, which I had spoken, not only the, I think I spoke it a few years ago- And you also had teachers, which I had spoken, not only to, I think I spoke it a few years ago, as city council, but at the Board of Ed, where you had teachers that in September, they told you who was going to get promoted in June. And that's the type of attitude that they had. But as long as you have a system where the teachers are teaching in the school, but their children do not attend the school, then something is wrong with the educational system that we have. It should be where if you teach here, your children should go here. But that's not the way it is. And that's one of the problems that are going on here, and there's no accountability. Our Board of Ed, they've been on there for years. And they have to be tired. But as long as they're being appointed, it's never going to be a change. It's never going to be a change in the way the system is. And then the Hispanic population in the schools, that has a lot to do with it. That has where the grades, because you know, if the grades will go down and they group all the grades together, they don't do it individually. It's all grouped together, and that's what give the school lower grades. But it has to be an accountability. And even going to the Board of Ed meetings, you're not going to get anywhere. And that's why we're coming to you, because you are appointed. The people appointed you. And for you to sit and say, well, I don't know, it's just not, it puts a different light on the city council. So I am asking you, as a grandmother with three children, that grandchildren that graduated from the system here in New Brunswick High, is that when you say to go to the Board of Ed meetings, then let's set a date and let's go there together. And speak for the people along with us.
Neil, I just want to say, because I've followed this thing about education through the last 20-something years. And when the School of Science and Technology was brought here, that idea came from Franklin when they had the Magnette Schools. And during the debate, I actually brought that up and showed them that's why we have it. But we have it so that it's not just for the New Brunswick people, it's for people who work for either Robert Wood Johnson anywhere in the county. But that brings some resolution to some of this. If you look at Marchetta here and his cousin who just left, they all graduated New Brunswick High School at the same time. If you look at the New Brunswick, North Brunswick, South Brunswick, and East Brunswick, right? New Brunswick is the only school system that don't receive white students in the school system. If you look at the ballot, you count, it's like you count the money when you want to know what's going on, and you count the feet of the people that attend there. And that's why I'm saying that we don't get the attention that we should. The reason I got education is because North Brunswick and Milltown was going to school at that particular time in New Brunswick. And so therefore, I got education because I was sitting in a room with other people. If you run in any organization and you're running it fairly, you want to make sure that everybody is gonna get the maximum attention to what you're trying to do. Depends on who's running it. If it was ran right, right, which other school systems have elected boards, and we have a selected board, if the captain, the mayor, was really running the city, he would make sure, that I would be in those schools to make sure that we bring in the right teachers, to make sure that we up to speed on everything, that we have the best of everything. You know, because it's about whoever running the show on how they feel things should be done. You know, and it truly, though, frankly, truly just common sense. I mean, it could be fixed just like that if we, and just not to just keep going on. Maybe we should have an education summit. Something that's not planned by New Brunswick tomorrow, you know, chosen for. Something that the citizens, you know, I can't go to university, I mean, the first thing a professor told me, you came from New Brunswick, so you didn't get what you're supposed to, I gotta fix you up. And at that time, we listened. And that's how I learn stuff. Education is the key, you know, to everything, to understand. It puts you on equal foot competitive with jobs on your resume that you have the proper stats, the proper education to get a good job. So the mayor, the only reason that we don't, to me, the only reason that we don't have a decent, is because of the mayor. Now, he'll come out and say, and get a few references, and throw a few references, and throw a few people together, and say he failed. But the result is, is when they came out and started electing today, that everybody in the county is up 80 and better. And all the other Brunswick's are in the 90s, and New Brunswick is 58%. So he's got to wear that, he's been here 20-something years, I mean, how long does it take you to change the tide?
So I just wanted to say, I think, I'm really glad that my comments started a discussion about this. I know this is not necessarily the totally appropriate form to have it. But I do think that, you know, it's concerning that the rates are going down instead of up. I remember a couple of years ago, we were complaining that it had fallen to 70. And now we're looking at 58. So I'd really like to engage in some constructive discussion about what we can do and focus on constructive solutions. So I also want to commend Committeewoman Marshall for, you know, raising the idea that maybe we could all attend these meetings together. Because I think what this discussion is showing is, not a lot of people know much about what's going on and what the problems are, myself included. And I've wanted to attend the Board of Ed meetings, but I haven't. So maybe we could set a date tonight where folks who are concerned about the graduation rate issue could attend the meeting. I know the next meeting is May 15 at 7:00 p.m. Councilman Racine, I know you are a member of the Board of School Estimate. It would mean that much more to the board if you were there with us. Would you be willing to attend that meeting?
I can, I don't know if I can at this point, can't commit.
Okay, well, there's another one next week, 22nd, so maybe I'll call you and you can tell me which one.
If I can correct.
Okay, because I really do think that would be helpful, and I just wanted to bring up one idea I had. Is anybody here familiar with the concept of social promotion?
Yes.
It is going on in New Brunswick.
I don't know what's going on in New Brunswick, I said social promotion, it's going on for years.
Okay, well, I would like to get to the bottom of that. Because I think that would be a real, concrete way to impact future graduation rates. If we would eliminate that practice, I know it might sound, if people don't know what it is, it might sound like a good thing. But social promotion is the practice of promoting people to the next grade, even if they're not ready for it. And I know that the city of Patterson, where I've done a lot of work, is working to implement that change. And the superintendent there says that he's implemented it in other cities and it's been successful. So that might be something we can all agree on and go to the Board of Ed and tell them. And it would mean a lot if, you know, the council president was there too. So I hope you'll consider joining us.
Go to Mr. Jerome, second.
Council President, I'm sorry. Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burley?
Aye.
Council President, aye.